Good afternoon. If everybody would take their seats and if you have a mobile device, an audible device, turn it off or to silence so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings of this meeting. Welcome to the Paulding County Planning Commission February session. Just go over a couple of notes here before we look at the minutes. Again, this is Paulding County is Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Board of Commissioners and to the city of Hiram. This day, we actually have both that are represented on the agenda. Anybody wishing to speak on behalf of an agenda item, the applicant must be present for it to be considered, or their agent must be here. You have 15 minutes to present. You can conserve some of that time if you wish to for rebuttal, but anybody wishing to speak on behalf of the same application uses that time as well. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns, there's 15 minutes allotted to that side as well. It's cumulative time. So if you end up with people standing behind you in line wishing to speak, please be mindful of that and save them a moment or two. Ask the Planning Commission now if you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous session of this body. If there's any questions about it, if not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous session?
I make a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Steele and a second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. And I will... Mr. Robinson, is there anything that I'm missing?
I did want to make one announcement, if that's okay.
Sure.
There's application 202504Z. It was application by Jeff and Reba Will. They were asking to rezone 12.78 acres from R2 to A1, and one of the permitted uses there was dog breeding. It's off of Mount Olivet Road, and that one's forwarded to next month, March?
Okay.
Just for some clear-up technicalities.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Well, at this time, if anybody has any questions about how to participate in a public meeting, there's a pamphlet on the back table. You may take it. It's your leisure. But at this time, if you would call the first application.
Absolutely. Thank you. The first application is 202501LUP, city of Hiram. It's application by Janet M., I mean, S. McMillan in care of J. Kevin Moore, requesting to renew an existing land use permit on 1.073 acres, which is zoned low-rise office, for property to remain a private dwelling for the applicant and the continued operation of a permitted business use. Property is located in Land Lot 681, District 2, Section 3. Address is 590 Hiram Douglasville Highway in Hiram, Georgia, and send Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval with one condition, and we have had no calls or prior complaints on this LUP, and we have recommended approval, and the applicant's present.
If the applicant will come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Planning Commissioners, I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant Janet McMillan in this application to renew her land use permit for property she owns here on Hiram Douglasville Highway. You see that on your screen now. The property is just over one acre in size. It has a, I guess the phrase would be used, a modified residence on the property. It's about 1,500 square feet. She acquired this property in 2015. The property's zoned LRO for low-rise office, though much of the properties in the surrounding area there along this segment of Hiram Douglasville Highway are zoned R2. This is in the city of Hiram, so you'll be acting your capacity as a recommending body to the Mayor and City Council for Hiram, who has granted previously on occasions, on previous occasions, this land use permit, which allows her to reside in this, at this location, as well as operate her permitted business use under the LRO category. So a lot of times, you'll see these types of requests where it's a residential property, and they're asking to be able to use it for some type of low-impact business use. This is kind of the opposite of that. This is property that's actually zoned LRO, so it's zoned to a non-residential or commercial category, and the request is to allow her to continue to live there. She operates a business, permitted business use there, that is very low intense, low impact. She is the only employee and operator and owner of that business, so it doesn't have employee traffic that occurs. The client base or customer base is also low impact. It's one at a time, typically by preappointment or scheduling, so there's not a tremendous amount of impact from traffic volume, either from customers or from the operation of the business. It just allows her to continue that business there since the property is zoned LRO, as well as continue to live there. There are considerations for both you as the Planning Commission and ultimately the Mayor and Council for the city of Hiram. There are a list of those considerations and factors. In fact, it goes from A to K. I'll just highlight a couple of those that I think are important, but we've addressed those, each and every one of those factors in our application as well, and that is, for example, parking and traffic considerations. As I've stated, the property has a small parking area in front, as well as plenty of room, and again, the type of business is a personal service business that is there and does not generate parking or traffic problems whatsoever. The number of non-related employees is zero. It's simply her as the owner and operator and resident. There are extremely limited commercial and business deliveries, as you might expect, and overall, the impact to the surrounding area, meaning the impact to the other homes along Hiram Douglasville Highway, has been very little to none from them. In fact, I'm not aware of any complaints that have risen at all, have no knowledge of any, and neither has she as of recent vintage at all with the operation, continued operation of her permitted business use and her ability to live there as well. We have reviewed this application with staff. Staff has proposed a, one condition of approval, and that is that the owner agrees that the approval is not transferable to another owner other than her. So it's a personal land use permit allowance for her, one that can't be transferred to some other proprietor or owner, for her to live there and operate her own business use there. So we'd appreciate your following, your staff's recommendation, as has been done before in this case, and recommend a renewal of the land use permit for Ms. McMillan. I'm certainly here and can answer any questions and be happy to, and certainly respect your consideration and time here today. Thank you.
Not to be pedantic, but she is agreeable to that stipulation?
Yes, she is, very much so. Thank you for your question.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
I have a question for staff. Mr. Robinson, we've seen this one multiple times. Has there been any issues? No complaints? Everything's operating?
There's been no complaints.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
As far as Hiram's concerned, the only complaint we've received in the past was regarding lighting around the building. We believe that has been significantly addressed, so it's not an issue.
Okay.
At least to my knowledge.
That's consistent with my understanding as well, Mr. Palmer.
No further questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion regarding application 2025-01-LUP for the city of Hiram.
I make a motion to approve with the one-listed stipulation.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Steele with the one-listed stipulation. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Callahan. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, this will be forwarded to the city of Hiram for their consideration. You will need to contact their zoning administrator to determine the date for the hearing because they still have to meet advertising requirements for that public hearing. Mr. Robinson?
Next application is 202502SUP, application by Vamsi Fassareddy, requesting a special use permit on 1.12 acres, Zone B2 Highway Business District, and it's for a proposed use of a CBD store and smoke shop. Property is located in Land Lot 74, District 19, Section 2. It's located on the northeast corner of Hiram-Aquith Highway, Highway 92, and East Paulding Drive. It's in Commission Post 1. Staff has recommended denial on this one, and two of the, out of the 14 standards that we are required to review, that we were concerned with, number one, whether or not there will be a significant adverse effect on the neighborhood or an area in which the proposed use will be located, and number 11, whether or not the public health, safety, welfare, or moral concerns of the surrounding area will be adversely affected. Staff did recommend, if the board chooses to approve, two stipulations.
Thank you. The applicant I see is ready. If you would please sign in and state your name and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon. I've worked so many years from different states across USA, so in this industry, like CBD and smoke shop. Now, I would like to open a CBD and smoke shop over here. My main purpose is to serve in the CBD industry, because which helps in, for both the human and the animals, even that kind of sector also. And I'm trying to be, as a first-time businessman, starting a business, so I'm trying to be like, understand what the situations and how these things work. That is all from my side.
Obviously, the staff has already stated that the recommendation for this application is denial, but if it were to receive favorable treatment, would you be agreeable to the two listed stipulations that are listed there? Are you familiar with them?
I'm not familiar what to... Sorry. I won't be transferring any permissions or I won't do. I'll be owning my own process. I'll be the owner-operator, and I'll be running the business.
Yeah. So they're simply stating on that first one that if you were to sell the business, if it were to receive approval and you were to sell the business, that the SUP would not transfer with it to another owner?
I wouldn't be transferring it, and I would try to dissolve it most of the time.
All right. Then let's go ahead and proceed with questions.
I have a question. So do you have any other stores? Is this your first one?
This is my first store, so I've been working these many years, so I'm trying to like, build up.
Okay. I have a question for staff, too. Maybe several members. Ms. Ferris, first question. With it sitting in the intersection of 92 and the 92 widening project, have you been able to look and see what's going to become of the building? That it would go in, and does the widening affect it or require relocation of the property or of the structure?
Yes, sir. I think that's all. So Georgia DOT has a widening project slated for State Route 92 in this corridor. This segment is right-of-way is set, scheduled to begin later this year. They're showing maybe getting a kickoff in March with a consultant. That may not happen. It may be a little bit later, and then go into construction probably in 2027. This parcel does show it is a displacement, so the entire store will be taken with the project.
Which leads us to the next question. It may be a legal question. Or if, if granted, would the SUP be the same if they move parcels? Is it granted to the parcel, which this parcel's not very big? So if there's a taking of the building by GDOT and it's moved, would the SUP still be good?
I would think not, because your zoning category, your zonings are set up by districts. Districts are geographically set out. If you change the location, you'll be in a different geographic district. You'd have to see what the underlying zoning is there. The zoning itself would certainly not travel with the owner to a new location, simply because zonings don't transfer that way.
Okay. And then one more question back to the owner. So the second stipulation that you read from Mr. Robinson is talking about local, state, federal regulations. Have you looked into that, of what you have to have, both state and federal?
I have just looked into it, so I'll try, I mean, I'll away all of them.
Right, but you don't have any of that yet currently?
No.
Okay. Okay. That's all for me.
I have a question. Do you personally own the property?
No, sir. I'm just renting the property, just a small unit in it, and I'm not trying to make any changes. And as long as for the parking, there is plenty of parking on the three sides of the building, and even I don't get deliveries like from big vans or any commercial vehicles also. I get small vehicles, like...
What, you just heard?
No.
Our DOT say that that building is going to be taken. You're willing to go in and put in a business knowing that the building is going to be lost?
I'm not sure when it's going to happen, but as a first-time comer, I want to see where that goes, and I want to try, give it a try.
Do you own the, do you own the parcel? Do you own the building, or you're subleasing from someone else?
I'm just renting the property, like, not the whole building, just the only, you need what I want, like the one unit is there in the corner, so I'm renting that.
And are you currently operating in there with something now, or you're just under lease with, as a tenant?
It's like, I haven't leased yet.
Okay.
So once I get the permissions and so that I can lease it out.
Okay.
And go for like fully fledged.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions to the applicant?
What types of CBD are you proposing to sell?
It's like medical and healthy, health-related ones. I want to like promote it, and most of the time, I'm trying to do like the animal thing, animal CBD products, which helps for the dogs and cats, those kind of products I'm more interested in, too.
Mr. Whip?
I've got a couple of comments from the school system perspective, because within the recommendation from staff, those stipulations, I mean, the number one and number 11 that they referred to, talking about the significant adverse effects, and also the health, safety, welfare, and moral concerns of the surrounding area. So what I did is I went ahead and I reached out to our executive team that, you know, runs the high schools and also our executive safety and security team, and they gave me a couple of pointers and kind of bullet points to just kind of talk about. One of those is whether or not it's legally or illegally. The use of any type of electronic smoking device is one of the largest disciplinary action items that is taken against high school and middle school students. And as we sit today, we have, last year, there were 446 events for a disciplinary action, half of those being long-term suspensions from students. So we are already on pace with what we currently have for a 10% increase to that this year compared to what we had last year. So the fact that we have a high school and we have a middle school within the vicinity, which would be that surrounding area to this, the accessibility of high school students being able to get there is definitely a concern that the high school, our school system would have. This is an excerpt from our Executive Director of Safety and Security, and he stated that "The location of the store would be highly enticing for particularly high school-aged youth who enjoy limited supervision and enhanced mobility due to their age, access to vehicles, and flexible schedules, which it also could contribute to potential increases in criminal and disciplinary activity based upon activity by allowing easy access to the school after purchasing and items being banned on school properties." Meaning, you could even potentially have somebody that comes to a store, purchases something legally, and then turns around because of the accessibility and easy location accessibility to the, to the high school or middle school, then turn around and sell to students that then the students use on the properties. So for the accessibility aspect of it and the fact that, you know, the, just close proximity, that's kind of where there would be a concern from a school system perspective to have a CBD or smoke shop that close.
So as far as I know of, the property I'm renting, there is a gas station beside it, so even they sell alcohol, right? So it should be, they'll be legalized for 20, at least. So it should be, they'll be legalized for 20, at least you need to be 21 to buy alcohol, right? So there you can, in the same way, I would run the, my business operation by using the same, like, whatever it is legally to do, I'll do it in a legal way, most of the time.
And understandable.
And coming to the electronics, most of the time, I'm trying to carry, like, most of, like, proper cigars. Like, people who wants to, like, smoke cigars, like, a big cigars, they need to drive down to Atlanta and buy, have those cigars. So what I'm trying to do is I'm bringing them all to here, just to access those cigars for people who are, like, retired people and veterans, all those. That's the smoke shop I'm looking into, not most of the electronics.
Are there any other questions to the applicant? Thank you, sir. You may take your seat.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, are there any further questions to the staff from the planning commission?
Just a quick edit on staff recommendations, paragraph three. Believe that should be East Paulding High School and Middle School.
And that is correct.
If there are no further questions, then I will entertain a motion with regard to application Again, the recommendation from staff is for denial, but there are two stipulations listed if you choose to recommend approval.
I make a motion to follow staff's recommendation and recommend denial.
I have a motion to deny the application by Mr. Leggett, and a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wicks. All in favor of the motion to deny. Motion passes six, zero, and one. You may get with staff after the meeting, if you wish, to talk about options that you may have.
Okay, the final application today is 2025-03-SUP, application by Strickland Dallas LLC, Brandon McDonald, requesting a special use permit on 3.36 acres of B2 Highway Business District property for the proposed development of a three-story Class A climate-controlled self-storage facility. Property is located in Land Lot 1273, District 3, Section 3. It's northwest side of Dallas-Aquworth Highway, off of Strickland Drive. The prior address was 109 Strickland Drive. It's in Commission Post 4. Staff has recommended the 14 criteria for SUPs, and based on the current zoning district of the property, which is B2, which is our intense, staff has recommended approval for this application with five stipulations. I do believe that the applicant would like to propose a different operation hours for the gate. And the applicant is present.
If the applicant would come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
And we have had no calls or questions or concerns.
Good afternoon. I'm Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Brady McDonald. I am an owners' rep, and my brother is the applicant, Brandon McDonald. So, yeah, the intention here is to build a brand-new Class A self-storage facility, so not the standard one that you typically see with garage doors facing the front. This is going to be single-story at the front, and the parcel actually is graded away from the road, so it would be three stories at the back and one story at the front. But look more like an apartment building or a Class A facade. So the only, with regards to the five stipulations, and this was purely an error on our application front, so when we submitted the application, it was stipulation number one, we did put in there 9:00 a.m. for gate hours to 9:00 p.m. And standard operating hours of a gate on these types of facilities is generally 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So that's what we'd request from a gate, for gates. And then hours of operation, where staff would be in the actual facility, would be 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And so the, this is standard across the industry nationwide, and this gives it a lot, gives the homeowners and users the ability to use the facility en route to work and on the way home to work, which is generally when they do use it. I'm happy to answer any other questions you guys have.
Mr. McDonald, so you're saying that you are in agreement with all five stipulations, just amending the one that would modify the hours of access?
That's correct.
Are there any other questions to the applicant from the planning commission?
Mr. McDonald, you see on number two, no spaces for boats, trucks, equipment, whatnot out front. You guys do any type of rentals, like U-Haul? No trailers, no, okay.
Absolutely not.
So strictly just interior?
Yeah, it's just interior. Yes, there'll be no exterior-facing garage doors, and all of the, the storage is contained within the building, and there is no extra space for, for parking of any sorts.
Thank you.
Yep.
What's your proposed security protocol?
Yep, so the entire facility is fenced, as well as all of, so that protects the people once they get through the gate. And to get into the access points inside the facility, they have to cross the gate. And so that protects anybody that's utilizing the facility, and then we use state-of-the-art cameras around the entire facility, and then have staff in-house, obviously, during working hours, and it's, and it is well-lit. And, but the, the lighting is also sensitive to the neighbors that are to the rear and to the.
What kind of device would be implemented to gain access to the site at the gate?
Sorry, say that again?
Would be a keypad or a smart card scanner to gain access to the site?
Yeah, exactly, a keypad, to get into the, through the gate. The, the main office, though, is accessible to anyone during working hours.
So that gate to the storage units, that stays closed?
24 hours a day.
So for a three-story building, then you're talking about basically a footprint, square-foot area of about 30-plus thousand?
Yes, you're right, sir. It's a, it's 110, or 11,000 total, so about 33,000 footprint.
Do you have an elevator in the building?
Actually, we've designed this because the grading on the, on the land is, is graded away from the road. We're able to build the, the front of the building two stories down in the ground, and to do this without an elevator, which helps, just from an accessibility, people prefer not to use elevators, so we did that intentionally.
You've got good insurance, right?
Pardon me?
I said, so you have good insurance for? If someone falls down those steps?
Oh, there's no stairs. So they, they have main floor access to each of the three floors. So there is no elevator for that reason, because they're able to actually drive along the one side of the building, down to a second loading area, and then to a third loading area at the, at the lower. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I don't, I don't see in your application any type of architectural renderings, but what do you anticipate for the front facade to be?
Yeah, we have multiple copies of that.
Can we pass those?
Sure. I've got a few sets, too, so.
Let me just give them to me, I'll pass them.
Yeah, so here's, those might be, here's.
Okay.
Want one done there?
Yep, if you would, go ahead and start it that way.
Yeah.
Send Mr. Wicks.
And while we're passing this, one question for DOT again. This is a state route, correct, I mean, a county route, correct, not a state route. So you're asking for additional right-of-way?
Yes.
Do you see any issue with that entrance interfering with that subdivision next door in their D cell line? They're going to tie together, so you're going to?
Yeah, they'll, they'll tie together. You know, we haven't looked at the plans that closely to see what that impact could be, but.
And they'll work on that at plan review when you go through there.
Yes, sir, and we did have a traffic study done initially, yeah, and it was also submitted.
On the front of this, I'm assuming that's all brick, just various colors?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Can, you have an issue if I stipulate that on here additionally?
Uh, no, no. We, we intend to utilize your code exactly what you, now you want. If there is any suggestions, we're happy to.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like metal siding on the three sides, but the front, the front first level is traditional brick.
Yep, yeah, we want to make sure that we, you know, give it a good look, you know, from the front. And then on the two sides of the building, there's a, there's a 40-foot untouched buffer on, along either side of the entire facility, which is really going to help protect the viewpoints from the side.
Okay.
In all the shuffling of the paper, you may have already said it, but the property falls under the corridor overlay district, correct? So it has a higher level of aesthetic requirement for the development itself, and you're familiar with that?
Correct, yeah, we are.
Then I'm not going to add the stipulation. I'll just leave it under the overlay requirement.
Okay. Are there any other questions to the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. Could you walk us through the, kind of the steps or the processes that took to help determine the need for the?
Yeah.
For what you're asking for in this location?
Yeah, it's a great question. Yeah, so what we do is, there's, there's a lot of great access to data to determine the supply and demand, and so generally what, what we'll do is we'll look at the state average across the entire state of Georgia is approximately about seven and a half square feet per capita, per person, in any potential particular three-mile market. So our market for any storage facility is three miles, okay? And so this three-mile market has 1.7 square feet of storage in it already. You know, there's one, one older facility down the hill, just a little bit further. So that means that this area is six square feet undersupplied per person. And so that, that's essentially the market study, and we do have third-party feasibility professionals do this as well to verify. So this, this particular facility will still not meet demand in the marketplace.
And just a follow-up question to staff. Are there any applications or future applications that might, we could potentially anticipate of additional, you know, storage in this area?
The last that would be in that area was further to the north, on, north of the crossroads, and then over on Seven Hills Connector, on these Class A climate control, but not south of the crossroads at this time.
I have a question, staff also. What about buffering along the line of where the residential is? What's going to be required there?
Well, these three properties were rezoned to B2 back in 1989 by the Strickland family, and that piece of property, which is used as residential, is currently Zon B2 also. It's not part of this SUP application. And therefore, since the zoning districts are matching, there's not a buffer requirement.
But what about to the neighborhood to the left?
To the left and to the rear is a 40-foot buffer that's required.
Okay. Now you have, from what I saw on GIS, you have a parcel that's behind it that has access out to Dallas-Aquworth?
There is a private driveway easement that goes down.
What was the zoning on that parcel?
That parcel's residential R2.
So it would require the buffer between?
Yes, and the property immediately behind this is a part of some of the open space for the adjoining Magnolia Point subdivision.
The parcel that?
What'd you see in the yellow?
3889 is part of the neighborhood?
Yes, the one, two, on the north side there.
That has the access out to Dallas-Aquworth on the 40-foot?
That access goes through that open space to an adjoining property.
Okay, I got you.
Further to the north.
I got you.
Any other questions to the applicant? Hearing none, you may take your seat. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2025-03-SUP. There are five listed stipulations for your consideration. The first one has been a request by the applicant to amend to an access, grant access to the gates from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. as a modification to that stipulation, if you so choose to recommend that.
I make a motion to approve of the five stipulations, amended stipulation, number one, hours 6:00 to 10:00 p.m.
6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That is made by Mr. Aston. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Callahan. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five, one, and one.
Mr. Chairman, who was the dissenting?
The dissenting vote was Ms. Fitzgerald.
Thank you.
Again, these applications for the county will be forwarded to, Mr. Robinson?
2 o'clock on March the 11th at this location.
Thank you. I've already mentioned the Hyrum application, so we're good on that one. Is there anything further I need to make mention of? Well, I would thank you all for your time and attentiveness, and I would ask the planning commission if you would give me a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
From Mr. Steele?
A second.
From Mr. Wicks is a second. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one.